Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was two water services leaks that we fixed. And then we changed out the J C meter. It's the meter head, we don't have to replace a whole meter anymore. We replaced three old meters and put the new meters in. Changed out water center valves. We replaced sewer main at Conley Street and Elliot. Put a new main in with plastic on service ladder. Mowing the residence lawn and we needed spray, spraying weed color around places in town. Two inch water main was agreed upon to replace the one down Airport Road. Installed a water station at Barlow Building. We trimmed up the trees on Ripley Streets and other streets before the school started.
Thank you. Town Marshal's report?
Fifty calls for certumis assist to other agencies thirteen times. At times assisted by other agencies. Seven ordinance violations. Criminal mischief report. Ben checks convicted. Two property damage accidents. Forty-two traffic violations. Two warrant services. Two domestic calls, one trespassing call. Two animal problems. Three nine-one-one calls. Three suspicious person calls. One welfare check. Four lawn calls. Two emotionally disturbed person calls. One child abuse. One missing person call. Two civil disputes. Seventy-one point five hours per reserves. And we had building inspections on the one oh two West car and the one oh seven clerk.
Come on, fire department, fire chief report?
All right, stats for August, we had eight good runs. Six were in city limits. Seven Franklin Township, one Washington Township. Approximately hours on calls, we had three hours and forty-two minutes. Put in eight hours of training. Fifteen hours of administrative meeting. Six hours of community service slash non-emergent assistance. Couple of projects we got going on, October twelfth, we have our chicken dinner eleven to two. You've probably seen on the last couple of Saturdays, we've been working up there. Probation cost some paint on the inside. Getting it spruced up and we're finalizing the smoke detector project. And Rod Johnson will kind of give details on what's going on with that.
How's everybody doing tonight? So as everybody hasn't heard, we partnered with a young gentleman by the name of Wilbur Wheeler. Wilbur is a, was a freshman this year. Started the project in two thousand twenty-four with him, his goal was to get smoke detectors into the hands of people that need them. Started on the project and as we started moving along with the project, we set our site at a hundred and fifty. But then as we started raising funds, one of the things that was very helpful for us is some of the local businesses and stuff stepped in. So we was able to upgrade to smoke slash carbon monoxide detectors. So through the generosity of the community, we are happy to report that we now have one hundred and fifty smoke slash carbon monoxide detectors. They're ten-year detectors, come with a battery, so they are ready to pop out of the package and put on the ball. So we're gonna try to partner with local churches and if the town knows of anybody. So my ask of you is if you know somebody that needs a smoke detector in their house, they can contact us. Get ahold of us, we can get one too. We're asking that there be one smoke detector per house. And we're asking that no contractors or landlords or, you know, stuff like that take them. But very cool project. Each smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector runs about thirty bucks apiece. And for him to raise enough funds to buy a hundred and fifty of them is pretty awesome, so. So yeah, so, thank you. So yeah, if anybody has any questions, catch me after the meeting, Harrison needs to see you after the meeting.
What about maybe contacting the school?
Yes, we've been in contact with the school. So our plans are is we've been in contact with an individual at the school, so I'm gonna be reaching out to her in the next day or so. And then I'm gonna see if Mr. Harris Long here can get me in contact with the churches, the congregations. And then if, again, if anybody knows anybody that needs one. Get ahold of us, do the fire department, we'll get them out.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Court report.
Alright, so we had a meeting in August. We had a pretty big discussion about our playground equipment because unfortunately another slide broke. If I think Doug, are you planning to get that slide taken out this week? I'm worried about. It's kind of coming hazard. So with that being said, somebody at Manchester Elementary contacted John Prichol and let him know that they're hoping to get rid of their playground equipment. So we've been trying to get ahold of them to see like if they're like selling it for cheap, if they're just getting rid of it, like what's going on? Cause it would be nice to kind of just inherit that from now until we can figure out like a better solution in the meantime. And then next, we have had a lot of complaints from sports organizations, citizens, us, about the way the park looks. The, it's not weeded hardly ever, it's not mowed once a week or even like regularly, or at least it doesn't look like it. The sports that are out of season right now, like the baseball and softball, those fields literally look like a abandoned, like they just look awful. It's embarrassing, like I'm not gonna lie, it's just embarrassing to look at. And Deb, you know that, I mean, I've sent you messages, we've discussed it. Because of that, we went ahead and contacted several local landscaping companies, we got free bids to see how much it would cost to contract out all the weed eating, mowing, spraying for weeds, like all the care that it would take for the year. Just to see if that would take away from like the town employees since they cannot keep up with it. So I just have those up there for you guys to take a look at. Hopefully that's something, you know, you can look at, I don't know obviously if we can afford to do it or not. But hopefully it is an option because I just don't want to go through another summer of our land looking like that, it's just, it's really embarrassing.
Guys getting those bids. And obviously you can tell by looking at them, it's astronomical.
Oh yeah, I know.
So hiring, hiring part-time help is much more efficient. You know, we were short mowers, we've had a lot of issues, a lot of rain this year, a lot of things, and I'm not making excuses, yes, it could definitely look better. And it will, and we intend for it to. So we are looking to hire a part-time, that was voted on at the last meeting, we had a special meeting about two weeks ago. It was open to the public, nobody came. But anyhow, we did vote to hire a part-time person year round, not just summer help because our summer help has not worked out. So this person who work, really, there's no limit on hours, they could really work full-time hours in the summer when it's busy. With mowing or leaf pickup. And then drop down to thirty, twenty, ten hours in the winter time and bizarrely are not averaging forty hours every week. So that's what we've looked at and that's what we've decided, knowing this was what was gonna come in on the bids. But we do appreciate you looking into it, it was suggested, we look into it, so we did. And that's kind of where we're at.
So are you guys taking applications for that? Has it been posted already?
It's going out this week also.
Okay, cause I just, I had a couple of people asking and were interested, so I'm gonna send it their way.
Yep. Yes. Yes, thank you. Art, did you guys have anything else you wanted to report on?
I do appreciate you guys spraying, you can tell that you spray a lot of weeds now, or at least Deb, it just needs to be cleaned up.
It will, yeah, it's, it's, it's processed, but it's
Trust me, we spent a whole day up there, we know what it entails.
It's a lot, it is. And, and I think, you know, the two new guys, they're getting a system together as far as, you know, how to tackle it and that kind of thing. Of course, we're gonna concentrate more on the sports that are in season than we are the out-of-season sports. So just, you know, a lot of grass to mow up there, it's expensive, you know, to maintain, but that's where our focus is right now. And we did hire somebody from soccer to mow soccer fields.
The soccer fields look way better right now.
And I know football's being taken care of, so those are the two sports in session now, that, that area is the concentration. They are still mowing the other parts once a week, it's just
Doesn't cheer use the softball fields? I guess that's why, because the cheerleaders are out there on like the softball field, cause there's nowhere else for them to go, like that time of evening.
I know, it's, there's, we're short on space, the middle schools being used, all the schools are practicing, it's just
I do know softball's still playing football too, which they practice there, they don't hold games there, but it's just, like right now the grass is more than ankle high.
Yeah, on, on the infield.
Yeah, the infield was mowed, so the field's mowed, but around the outer, like I started to pull weeds and I, I just need a weed eater if they're honest with me. The weeds mostly are dead, so that helps, so they won't be growing.
Right, yeah, and it's getting to now we're dry, so we're not getting the rain like we were, so we should be able to manage it much better now. So, but thank you. Alright, old and continuing business, one oh seven Clark Street inspection. So that inspection should have been done on September fourth, it sounded like, me report it was, so we're just waiting on the report. Right, okay. Ranger purchase on September sixth.
Yeah. You guys at the special meeting voted to do the Ranger. I just need to know where you wanted to come from.
Where was the mower coming from? The money for the bucket truck and all of that. That we had allocated for the bucket truck and then we ended up
So it was split three ways.
Okay. So wherever, yeah, wherever those funds are, cause it's gonna be used for all. All things, so. Alright, new business, resolution, one oh eight two oh two five dash three.
So that's a budget reduction resolution for two thousand twenty-five. Reduction of the edit funds of twenty-two thousand dollars. So that we can fully fund the two thousand twenty-six. Instead of it showing us wouldn't be in the negative.
Gotcha, so it's just reallocating some money to cover the budget?
Yeah, yeah, so. Well, I'll put that reduction in and then we'll show that the money is gonna be there in the fund for next year.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
All in favor? And then the budget, public hearing. So that you would just, I'm assuming this is when you're opening it up to the public for any comments on the budget, and I think that's posted through the state?
Uh, through Gateway, and it's posted, yes. And what it boils down to is the general fund is budgeted for five hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Local roads and streets, thirty thousand. Motor vehicle highway, a hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. Parking rack, fourteen thousand six hundred. Cum cap of three thousand. Local law enforcement, continuing education, five hundred. Edit, a hundred and seven thousand. Public safety, ninety-one thousand one oh eight. And river code, five thousand, for a total of nine hundred eighteen thousand eight seventy. And that's right about where we was last year, so.
Alright, thank you. So any comments or questions regarding that, it is online, so you can take a look at it. We will also, next meeting, I guess be voting to approve it. If there's no questions, then I guess we can move on. If there's something we need to do to close out the hearing or anything?
You can just close the hearing for the record?
Okay. A dispersment to F and V.
Invoice for Pysavanderbrink for the water project of twelve thousand six ninety-one seventy. And it's for professional services rendered through July twenty-sixth, and I think that closes them out.
Alright, we're moving on to the public items, before we start that, I just want to make a couple of clarifications. Again, for those people who are gonna be speaking here, you have five minutes to discuss your concern. If you need it, you don't have to have all five minutes, but that's the maximum. If you keep repeating yourself and you're not really making a point, we're gonna stop you and ask you to please thank you for your time and move on. But anyhow, that's, that's pretty much it, and hopefully everything moves smoothly. So we'll start with our first solicitation for a roadblock, the S A L, codes for kids.
They wanna have that on nine thirteen from nine to twelve.
All in favor? Second one is for the V F W, for the poppy fund for veterans.
Yeah, they wanna have that on nine twenty-seven from nine to twelve.
All in favor? And another one for Nancy Hirschman Scholarship Fund.
They wanna do that on eleven twenty-two from nine to twelve.
All in favor? Alright, Dave Kelly?
Yeah, I'll take the five minutes, so if I can get up to three. First of all, address the county's office. Unless I'm gonna use the Freedom of Information Act, I'm gonna be wanting a lot of information from you on your job, salaries, the secretary and everything of that nature. But we won't go into it tonight, I'll bring you the list of what I want under that act. Alright, one of the things, the streets in town, North Main, it's getting worse and worse, you got more cars parked than you ever had. And this is just a recommendation, put signs up, no parking all the way out. Up where the Denver Gate in that area used to live, there's four cars tonight on that street, parked on the street. Now, do we have an ordinance, don't we, no parking on the streets, cause I've got a sign right down, comes into Myland, posted by the town that says that.
Some streets, there are certain signs and some streets have certain areas of no parking, but I, off the top of my head, I could not tell you that street.
Well, I want you to use the town board, use the town cop, look at Ellsworth. It's a two-way street, you're damn lucky to get one car going through it.
Ellsworth, did you say?
Yeah, it's right up here by Jappy Ground. You got a four-wheel drive parked on the sidewalk with a flat tire, two on the sidewalk, two on the street. The other side of the street is full of vehicles, it's a two-way street, cause there's a stop sign on both ends. You, you're damn lucky if you can get one car through it. But the ones on North Main, you have to stop. If you've got somebody coming out of town, you're coming into town, you have to stop, wait for them to go by and go around two cars, they need to be moved. For some reason for them to be there. But we're not gonna improve Myland until you improve the streets of Myland, and that's just a fact, I mean, that's, that's enough on that. Let me get my notes here. There is a town ordinance on the streets, is what I was asking.
Yeah, they're specific to each street, so we would have to take a look, but
Well, some things I want to touch on, you know, the constitution says we the people, that's your people, not me, but all of us. Now, if you don't get band together and tell these people what you want, you ain't gonna get it. That's what it boils down to. So you've got, people gotta find a spokesman, somebody get up here and tell them what's going on, and it ain't me. I'm seventy-eight years old and I'm not gonna do it, I'm not interested in these jobs, but I'm interested in improving Myland. If it hadn't been for the Kellys, Molly Myers, and her father, Myland wouldn't exist. That's a hell of a note. We put our money back into this town and I'm still putting back in, just, I'll give you an example real quick. Tony Ruble was in an accident out here at Old Myland years ago, or Delaware. Pinned in the truck forty-five minutes, had to call a life squad room, all's good to get him out, cause we didn't have his joll's life. You know, thirty days later, that fire department had the joll's life out, I know, Kelly Oil Company paid for it. We didn't run over to the paper and get a handshake and make a big issue out of it, we bought it for the community, you people. This is where we made our money, we made our living right here in Myland, I'm damn proud of it. And I want to thank you people. Until you get together as a whole and tell them what to do, and then get together and tell him what to do, clean up the streets. People, I thank you, appreciate your kindness, and I hope I didn't piss anybody off. I'm gone, thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Goak.
I'm Lynn Schwart, I speak for Shirley.
Straight home.
I'm not even from Myland. We're hosting the Crop Walk this year, Brooklyn County Crop Walk, and it's taking place in Myland. We would like to go from the Baptist Church, Main Street to Carr Street, if we cross one oh one and go down and turn on Airport Road. And then turn around and come back. We would like, so we crosswalk, help assistance from the police department and permission from whoever. I need permission from to do that. If we can't get that, we can do an alternate route through town, but that's just a nicer walk.
When was this again?
October fifth. The Sunday afternoon, one o'clock. Usually takes about an hour, hour and a half, depends on how fast people walk.
It's just walking, it's not running, right? It's just walking, it's not running.
Some people can run.
Maybe some young kids that wanna run.
Yeah.
For a bus.
I've seen you running out there before.
Not useful.
Oh, cause nobody's after me.
Lynn Schwartz. If that's not okay, then we can do an alternate route, but that's the one we would like.
Yeah, so you're going Carr?
We're on Main, Carr.
Crossing one, one oh one, right?
Yes. We passed one oh one twice.
Is that, I guess, the main place where we would need police?
Yeah.
Because obviously not everybody's gonna be a herd, it's probably gonna be
Well, start out as a herd, but coming back, it won't be a herd.
Yeah, it'll be kind of like squatty, so that's why, you know, that's why, go ahead.
Would it be okay then, once they reached one oh one, that we kind of herd them up and then cross instead of having to stop traffic?
Yeah, I would think that would be alright, wouldn't you?
Probably, except the beginning, the first part of it especially, it's, it's almost the beginning of the walk, so most people will be together.
Okay, but I mean, as far as coming back, is that gonna, would that be okay?
Coming back would be a problem because some people walk faster than others.
But I mean, would it be okay for them to like let them kind of bunch up and cross? I mean, it may not be a whole lot of traffic that afternoon, but I'd just say that
Yeah, they wouldn't have to wait for everybody to get out, right?
Let's clear, we can just go across and then kind of just
We did that route once before, how many years ago that was, Harrison?
Probably fifteen or twenty.
I remember walking out.
Yeah, we did that.
We walked out, but it was a much longer walk the last time.
It's nationwide, one by church, one service, information, get, if you'd like to join us.
All in favor? Thank you, thank you for that. Next, Amanda Call, charges?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
Yeah, we've ruled it. Okay, thank you.
I'm Amanda Call, the Brooklyn Street, I just had a couple of questions about my water bill that started back around March's bill. I wanted to bring it to your guys' attention. Melissa's worked with me as much as she can on her part, but in this time, when I got the March bill and come up and talk to him, it was a little bit after the bill cause my husband had some medical issues, with Sharn, did that taken care of. We had Doug come out and look at our meter, he checked it, I wanted to say it's like a Wednesday and he said he'd come back Friday. And in two days, he said I ran eight hundred gallons of water, so he assumed it was my meter going bad. So in this time, my meter was sent off, per what Doug went off of, I still got charged it. Cause it come back and said it was good, but if you look at my readings, which I've had a plumber out here at this time. The May one that you're looking at that looks astronomical, yeah, that's the one about giving you a heart attack too, was a wrong reading. They did come back and Melissa was able to correct that one for me, but the two before that, when I've had absolutely no work done there, no nothing from this plumber, cause I did not have the issue. The meter's gone now, there's nothing, I, I don't know what to do about it, I find from going, I thought a hundred and fifty dollars a month was bad for a family of three. But when I'm looking at four, five hundred on a fixed income, I can't afford that. There's, there's something wrong with it and it's not on my end when it comes back and it's all, went back down to the three thousand that I was running before. So that was my question, if you guys had a chance to look over it and decide what we could do on some of this, you know, the charging on it. And if you have any questions, feel free to answer them after the meeting.
Yeah, thank you for the information. Do you have any? Yeah, that's good.
And I can leave my number at the bottom of that paper?
We've got it.
Melissa's got it? Yeah, she's been taking care of me so far, so I'm sure.
Okay.
She'll get it to you.
So we will definitely look into this, I don't, you know, I don't think with all the, we need more information from her and
and different things, so we'll, you know, we'll be in touch or I'm sure she'll get ahold of me, she, she's pretty good about it, so, I'll have a complaint there.
We will definitely, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, comments on the agenda items, and again, before we start this, this is one of those things where you can talk about things that have been talked about and on the agenda. Nothing that's not on the agenda, one did you have a question?
I had one job to do and that was to get on this agenda and I did not get on here. And if I could have five minutes.
Go ahead.
About the Christmas walk. Four minutes, three minutes?
I think you could do it in one.
Okay, thank you for everything in the past that you have done, okay? But, and I, I am here representing the Christmas walk. To talk about the event that's gonna be held this Saturday, November twen, not this Saturday, but Saturday, November twenty-ninth, from five to eight. So it's our understanding that the park boards already discussed that and that we, there's no issues. We would like to have the light of parade again through town. The volunteer fire department will be assisting with this walk again and it's gonna be the same, I believe the same route, but I can go, I can tell you really quick. Left on one oh one, right on Ripley, left on Main, right on Carr, left on Franklin, left on Faulkner, left on North Main, turn right. Turn right on three seventy-five north, I don't know where that is. Anyway. I don't think that's right.
That's Mill Road.
What is that?
That's Mill Road.
Oh, is that Mill Road?
Yeah.
Okay, turn right on Mill Road, okay. We would like to request police presence for the event and how do we go about doing that? You were there last year.
Well, first of all, you gotta get on the agenda.
Can we have a special meeting? October's gonna be too late.
You don't think it's, do you?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
Guys, okay.
So, um, I, I think that is the same parade route, isn't it?
Same as that, yeah. It's the same as the homecoming route, the short.
Yes, yes.
And it's all driving, right?
Yes, no pedestrians, no.
All driving, no candy.
No candy, that's right. We're not getting candy this year.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's your, there's your okay for the police.
Thank you. Um, did you have a special meeting about the insurance that was, or was that today?
Or it's to, it's today. I mean, it's, yeah.
Um, we'd like the bathrooms in the back to be open?
Bathrooms will be open until after the Christmas walk.
Okay, and that's the one, the old Barlow building, I believe. I think I still have the key.
Well, probably in all of them.
Okay, okay, okay. I think I've got you guys. I just, uh, still. Need the roadblocks for the entrances, need the roadblocks for the entrances to the park front and back.
Same as last year.
Okay. And then whatever we need for security, garbage collection, cleanup, you know, and how we, you know.
I do know one thing, we would prefer like a quicker pickup of items.
We just get stuff in our.
Good, so that's, that's the only thing, you know, the decorations is kind of sticking around for years.
Spring, okay, February, please.
We've, actually, I think we talked about thirty days.
Yeah, thirty days, well, we can, you know, depending upon weather.
Yeah, I mean, we're a little flexible, but, you know, but at the same time, we just, we don't wanna, you know, nobody really likes Christmas lights after first of February, you know, some people may be.
We were always following the Lions Club, remember that. And then when we went, whenever the Lions came down, then that's what we attended.
Gotcha. Well, that's obviously weather dependent as well, but that's usually, we try to do that end of January, beginning of February.
Yeah, we'll, they will do our best.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So other items.
One thing I'd like to add, that you mentioned cleanup. I know that, um, the Cub Scout group around town, sometimes they like to get involved and help out with stuff like that. They may help.
I got a question. I was the recipient.
State your, state your name. That's okay.
My name is Bridget Hawkins. I was the recipient of one of those nice letters you sent out for cleanup. I have, uh, several vehicles on my property. I don't have the title of one, and it blocks the other one in. And the guy I called for the pickup said he cannot tow it until I have a title in my hand. So I requested a title from the state, and I have not received anything yet. So I tried to get an extension on those twenty-day thing, because I didn't even know until I got back, I was two months in Texas. When I came back, it had already started, all of it. And, uh, I was trying now with the court, and I even called, uh, oh, so we don't see.
Deep breath.
Uh, I offered, I called him also, and, uh, I talked to Mrs. Flaggerman, I think. Oh, that was you, I'm sorry. And, uh, I just, I'm trying to, but I cannot go over the,
Yeah.
I don't know where to put it, take it apart, put in a trash can.
Yeah, we'll let, let him dress that for us. So, so she did contact me right away, and we were talking about the essential time for her to take care of these things. I think the court, when she, she filed for the extension, I think the court thought she was asking for a continuance instead of an extension to respond. So the court denied it, but I've been honoring the ninety days that she requested, so that's, that's coming.
But that's all I'm waiting for, is pretty much the title.
Yeah, okay.
And then after that can be moved, then the other one can get out.
Right.
It's blocking one, it's blocking the other one, and everything else is gone.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
And we appreciate you coming to us and requesting, and you did the right thing by going through the channels. So, thank you for that. Anybody else? Thank you.
I have just one thing.
Yes.
I had a water leak, and y'all came out, and it's now, we know what's happening, and I appreciate that, cause that was a real worry. Whether, and where the good water was going. I just, you know, we all pay, but it, um, Doug said he's gonna take care of it, fix it. It's all gonna be peachy, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. She does that.
Doug was at my house also, and he said he's gonna fix it, and it'll be more than peachy when that gets done.
Easy.
What? This is true. I did, yeah. It's my water pressure. It's been bad for a while. I mean, that's true.
You're, for the crop walk thing, or whatever it is there where they're crossing the highway, let us know. We can set a couple of fire engines out there, and if you wanna pack them in in groups and move them across, we'll be more than happy to use a fire engine to kinda help walk the road and and stuff. So, just whoever's organizing it, let us know, and we'll be more than happy to help out with it, okay?
How many people do you guys anticipate for that?
We have no idea. It used to be like three hundred people, but it's dwindled down over the years. I think last year, what, we have maybe thirty?
Okay.
So, I'm hoping it's more.
We'll get more this year.
Yeah, I would love to have three hundred, but I don't know.
Is that something open to the public to participate in? I'm sorry, is that open to the public to participate in?
Yes, yes. You want a, you want a team, just see me.
And who do we contact for?
Um, you can contact Kara Sloan, Shirley Bochok, myself, Linda Schwartz, five one three, three one two, two zero seven eight.
Okay. Everybody got that? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right.
Yeah, yeah.
One ones?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. One second. Bye.
I love that song.
Hey.
I wasn't.
I wasn't there.
Oh, you wasn't there? Yeah.